I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. I am Chair Beth Cassavant. We're just going to go around and introduce ourselves before we get started.
Hi, I'm Teresa Flynn.
Michelle Conlin.
Carlos Garcia.
John Samia.
Town Manager Kevin Mizikar.
Assistant to Town Manager Justin Dobson.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Second item is to approve the minutes of September 26, 2023, which was a meeting, and October 3, 2023, which was a workshop.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Madam Chair, I will just abstain from the October 3 minute since I was not present.
Excellent, thank you. Item number three is announcements and reports. Do any board members have any announcements or reports this evening? Okay. Item number four is the Town Manager's Report.
Just one update. I wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to attend the International City County Managers Association Conference in Austin, Texas last week. During my time there, got to interact with a lot of city-county leadership staff from across the country and across the world. Participated in eight different educational workshops, which I can get you all up to speed on over the course of the three days that I were there. So it was really reinvigorating and humbling in some ways to see the good work that's being done in local government across the globe and just engage with over 5,500 local government professionals while we were there. So, thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to providing you guys with more information Monday.
Great, thank you. Item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31 to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings on matters within the Board's authority. No one has come forward for public comment this evening, but we will remind people that to do so, you just need to contact the manager's office by noon on the Monday before our meeting. Item number six is a 7/35 public hearing regarding an application by Daniel Brennan, Jr. on behalf of Starbucks Corporations DBA, Starbucks Coffee, 200 Hartford Turnpike Building, 3 Unit 5 for a common Victrols license. I believe he's joining remotely.
Correct. There we are.
Hello? Are you able to hear us?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yep, very clear, thank you.
Great, welcome. So, we're here to approve your common Victrols license, and if you wanted to share anything with the Board in regards to your application, now would be a great time.
Sure. So my name's Daniel Brennan, I handle permits and licenses for Starbucks. We have our new store here under construction in Shrewsbury. It's a freestanding, single-tenant building, drive-through. It's just over 2,400 square feet. We will have 28 interior seats and 20 seasonal patio seats with a trellis over it. We're requesting our hours be 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Those hours will likely be reduced to 8:00 p.m., but we like to keep our options open if we want to stay open a little later. We hope to open first or second week in November, and look forward to bringing the new store to town.
Great. Okay. This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Not seeing anyone?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any questions from board members? I know that we received the updated workers' compensation insurance today, so that's got the correct date on it, so that's squared away, and that any motion that we make to approve this evening needs to be contingent on the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So outside of that, if there are any questions from board members? All right, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve contingent on the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you are all set.
All right, thanks so much.
Looking forward to having you open in Shrewsbury, thanks.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye. All right, item number seven is to review an act to authorize the Town Manager to file applications and execute agreements relative to the state revolving fund loan program for the Maple Avenue and Rolfe Avenue pump station improvement and force main replacement projects. If you have anything you want to add on that?
Yeah, so just a quick background, the state's revolving fund is a loan pool that's managed by the state and funded through grants from the federal EPA. The driver behind this program and why we're interested in it is because it offers low interest rates, much below market rate. For a 20-year loan, we can get a 2% interest rate, and for a 30-year loan, which we actually would be eligible for, we get a 2.4% interest rate. So as we move through the process and shape up our financing plan, we'll determine a term and come back to the Board and let you know, but this authorization will allow us to get into the pipeline for these critical improvement projects. The borrowing authorization for these projects was approved by Town Meeting in May.
And do I remember correctly that like two-thirds of our sewage goes through Maple Avenue?
It does.
Right, so this is a really important pump station. If something were to go wrong with it, we would be in a whole world of trouble, so
Yep.
A good thing to do. All right, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I just ask a couple of quick questions?
Yeah, of course.
Just a few questions on this relative to our current practice or usual practice to go to the market. Is there regular reporting or does it differ for this program versus the program that we have in place? Does the state require any covenants or anything like that? Understanding we're getting a better rate and where the capital markets are, but is there anything more onerous or is it?
No, nothing more onerous. It's actually upfront, it's a little less onerous. We don't have to get a bond rating for accessing these funds, and our, there's essentially very limited issuance costs, so when you access the market, we probably pay between $15,000 and $60,000 to, you know, go through the bond rating process and get out into the market through our financial assistance firm, and we don't have to do that in this program.
And, so with the transaction cost list too, with the pretty much basic forms that the state adds and you just get in and then, okay?
Yep, it's really straightforward. I think from looking at some of the data from 2022, there's been almost $2 billion in loans issued to Massachusetts municipalities through the state revolving fund, and we've received it in the past. The most recent time was for the water treatment plant construction.
And one last question if I may. So the revolving fund, is it subject to state appropriation or is the state already funded it?
It's already funded.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, looks like a motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. So, item number eight is to review an act to recommend the warrant articles for October 16, 2023, special Town Meeting, and I know we have a presentation for this.
Yeah, so Board members, I'll walk through the nine warrant articles that are on the special Town Meeting warrant and provide you the details associated with the motions. Town Meeting members should have received by now their packets for the meeting, and if anyone hasn't, they can reach out to us or actually just access them online. We're also encouraging anyone that needs larger print items that would be helpful for them in viewing the materials to please reach out to manager@shrewsburyma.gov, and we can prepare and print those for them and make sure that we're providing that accommodation. So, Justin, if you wouldn't mind moving forward, I can review and go to the next slide. So, I wanted to start off with a brief financial recap since there's been changes to the overall funding model, revenue model for this meeting from the spring. It's one of the primary reasons that we meet each and every fall is to do some financial cleanup for the fiscal year. So we passed the budget at the May Town Meeting. At that time, it was, little did we know, it was almost three months in advance of the state finalizing the budget. So there were some changes associated with the state, and also what happens is that we get certification of our total new assessed value and new growth after May through the diligent work of the principal assessor. So those two factors alone have led to some changes in the revenue model. I'll start with new growth. So, total new growth was originally estimated at $1 million, which is consistent with our base trend for new growth over the past, or five or six years, due to tremendous growth and a number of projects moving from being under construction to getting their final CEOs and their full value hitting the books, including the Edgemere Drive-In redevelopment project and also the commercial development at Centec North. We experienced nearly $160 million in new real estate value, and that total value for fiscal year '24 will bring us $2.2 million in new growth revenue. So that's a $1.2 million increase in total revenue that's available to us, and we're going to be very conservative and add to our reserves, which I'll talk about, and make some other very minor changes to the budget. The second area is state aid, and while total state aid increased from what we had estimated in May, the net change in the revenue and charges provided a $140,000 total decrease from where we started in May, so we're making those adjustments, accepting the new revenue and adding the new charges in. And then finally, the strong performance of our local receipts or Schedule A revenue came in at about $15.8 million. So we are taking the opportunity to increase local receipts by $200,000, and again, those funds are going to be invested into our reserve and continue to build towards policy level in our general stabilization account. So, Justin, if you can continue to move forward. So, I will detail out through the other warrant articles, we'll be making adjustments to municipal operating departments, we'll be covering those additional state and county charges, which actually won't be really obvious in any of the warrant articles because that happens outside of the purview of Town Meeting. We're recommending some additional capital investments, and then the warrant articles are associated with general stabilization fund investments. So, Justin, if you can keep going. So Article 1 is to make some adjustments in the fiscal year '24 operating budget, if you can go to the next slide. So we propose to make three changes to the operating budget. We're proposing to add $106,500 into the new salary and wages line item within the Personnel Board. We utilize these funds to make mid-year adjustments and provide compensation associated with various irregular changes to salaries and wages throughout the course of the year. The reason we're specifically asking for this funding at Fall Town Meeting is because we're seeing a pattern in several departments for several particular positions where we're struggling to both retain staff and recruit new staff. A couple of the most glaring challenges that we're facing is that we've had our Assistant Town Planner position vacant since March. We've made two or three offers to qualified candidates, and they've all elected to choose other organizations and have all cited higher wage opportunities when making their decision. Within the library, we've struggled to maintain some adult services librarians, and upon exit interview of the two most recent departures, they've cited wage competitiveness and leaving, and we've dug into that through a wage comparison with surrounding towns, and we are lagging there. That's something that we want to address. We've also had similar retention challenges within the Department of Public Works, within the Business Management Division, and public safety dispatchers. So we're looking to put these funds in place to be able to take the appropriate action in recruiting and retaining staff in those particular areas as we move forward. So, the second change that we plan to make within the operating budget is adding $104,000 to the Reserve Fund. It's managed by the Finance Committee. This Reserve Fund is used for unforeseen and unexpected or unanticipated expenses that occur throughout the course of the year. Bringing it to $354,000 in total funding brings it to the policy level, which is 5% of operating expenditures of the entire budget. We've relied very heavily, as the operating budget has grown over the years, we've relied heavily to make these minor modifications in comparison to the $150 million operating budget that we manage. So, we do have continued concern with some inflationary measures. We will be renewing our fuel, gasoline and fuel contract again in January, and as fuel prices continue to be kind of higher than they have been on average, we may see a need for that, and then potentially also compensating for some capital costs associated with capital improvements that we're going to make within school buildings that may drive our utility costs up. And then finally, within the Fire Department, salaries and wages, there's two factors driving this $124,000 increase. The first is, when we settled the three-year collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters, we felt that it was important and prudent to work with the union and having an incentive for our current firefighters to become EMT certified. There's two reasons for that. One, our firefighters obviously are first responders, and the majority of the calls they go to are medical, so this will provide them with enhanced skills in their response. And second, as we look forward to challenges that we're facing with our partnership with UMass Medical and EMS Services, Emergency Medical Services, the more firefighters that we have, the better position that we would be in a town if we decide to make a transition to an in-house ambulance service. So, that continues to be on the table, and we think it's important to just provide that greater skillset to firefighters, which, you know, will benefit us regardless if we run an ambulance service or not, but would be even more beneficial if that's the direction that we do move in. So, in total, these changes represent less than 2/10 of 1% of the overall budget that was passed in May, and we feel it's prudent to make these changes, both for those staff recruitment and retention things, matters, boosting the Reserve Fund. And then, sorry, one more point within the Fire Department is that we currently have a full-time firefighter out injured on duty. He was injured during a house fire in May, and so we have, his prognosis keeps him out through the majority of the fiscal year, so we've budgeted or requesting this increase equivalent to one full-time firefighter at time and a half for the entire fiscal year to backfill that shift. We've seen over the past couple of years that now that we have, you know, 44 firefighters throughout the course of the year, unfortunately, given the hazards of the duties of a firefighter, there's almost always one firefighter out that's, you know, on some injured-on-duty type of leave. So, we've relied in the past two years most heavily on the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to backfill shortfalls within the Fire Department, and we think this is a step in the right direction to overcome that reliance upon the Reserve Fund. So, again, in the grand scheme of things, 2/10, less than 2/10 of 1% of the overall budget that was improved, but it will make a significant difference to operations as we move throughout the rest of the fiscal year.
And without the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, you'd have to go back to Town Meeting if you fell short.
Absolutely, yep.
Any questions right now? Okay, come on.
So, Article 2 is to transfer funds into the General Stabilization Account. The Town's General Stabilization Account is our rainy day fund, and we use it for emerging, emergency, unexpected, unforeseen financial issues. We haven't relied upon the General Stabilization Fund recently, which is a really good thing. Justin, if you could move forward. So we are proposing to add just shy of $600,000. The current balance shown there on the screen is we have a little less than $4.8 million. Making this additional will take us just shy of $5.4 million. That $5.4 million represents 3.69% of the overall school and municipal budgets as amended through this Town Meeting. Our policy level is 5%, so we're making a lot of progress to getting there, and this will just help keep us moving. So, the benefit, another benefit of this, not only adding these funds to the Reserve, which are assets to the community in the future, but it's also a one-time contribution. So it's, you know, these funds, when we turn the corner for the next fiscal year, will be available for other appropriations, so we're not making a long-term commitment through this investment. So, Article 3 is to make further capital improvement investments, augmenting what we did in May for the fiscal year '24 capital improvement budget. So, Justin, you can move forward. So we look to make three investments as proposed here. The first is a $250,000 investment in school-building HVAC systems. As we've seen, as recently as this fall, not all of our educational spaces within our school buildings are climate-controlled, they don't have air conditioning within them. So, this has caused early, the superintendent to have to call for early dismissals and kind of disrupt the flow at the beginning or the end of a school year because of higher-than-desirable heat within, or temperatures within the classroom. So this $250,000 investment will allow us to address upper floors within schools that don't have AC, and we should be able to address up to 100 classrooms through this investment. So, this isn't certainly, this certainly is not a long-term investment, but we think it's a step in the right direction to address this immediate need as soon as this coming spring, subject to availability of the equipment, and it also allows us to invest in any electrical upgrades and things like that we need to actually operate the system. So, this would satisfy the vast majority of classrooms that were the largest areas of concern this past fall, when temperatures in some of those rooms exceeded, you know, 80, 85 degrees.
This was a higher number at one point?
It was, yep.
What happened to make it lower?
Just refining, you know, tying things out, work of the Department of Public Works and Public Building Committee to right-size the number.
Great.
But same number of classrooms.
Like 40 classrooms? No, 100 classrooms, because it was like, you were thinking 4,000 a classroom, but now it's supposed to be less than that?
That's correct.
Okay.
With these added HVAC systems, expecting we'd see increased cost of energy, energy costs for the buildings, is that what is addressed in Article 1 with the Reserve Fund?
Yeah, yeah, we are definitely, we think it may impact. We've done some electrical cost estimates. I think we're considering 60 days per school year that these units would run, so it's not something that we planned for in the FY '24 budget, but that's how we'll look at it moving forward. Yep. So the second area is some building security needs that we're continuing to address, both within school and municipal buildings. I don't want to talk about specific buildings or initiatives, but these are lock systems, fortifying, you know, locking and control and building access systems to continue to ensure everything is meeting best practices and as secure as possible within municipal and school facilities. And then finally, $65,000 in additional hardware investments, including Wi-Fi access points at the library and other computer hardware replacements across Town Departments of $65,000. We weren't able to satisfy the original request of the IT Department in the capital improvement plan that was passed in the spring, so we look for these funds to shape up their full request. So, okay, in total, it's $350,000 that we're looking to make additional investments in through these three areas. Article 4 is a financial housekeeping measure. We're looking to rescind the balance of the borrowing that was authorized for the Beale Elementary School located at 214 Lake Street. Justin, you can move forward. So the total amount of money that was authorized for the construction and borrowing for this project was the total project value. This Board knows that the MSBA requires us to show full appropriation of funding, whatever the total contract and construction value would be for the construction of the school, despite receiving 52% in a state grant. So this represents the amount of money that we were authorized to borrow but did not need to borrow for that project, not only because of the state grant, but because of the exceptional financial management of that project and it coming in well under budget. So, by rescinding this excess borrowing, we're essentially eliminating an open line of credit that we have that would be, and that action would be seen favorably by bond rating agencies as we move forward. So this, these dollars were never borrowed, it's not incurring interest, it's just taking it off our ability to borrow in the future. Article 5 is a continuation of the Board's tax equity and tax incentives for property owners within the community to lower the tax burden. In very rare circumstances, residents have the ability to apply to the Board of Assessors to defer their taxes, which means any unpaid, a specific unpaid amount of their taxes that are due aren't paid, and they're held in deferral. Interest accrues on them, and according to the general laws right now, the maximum amount of interest that can be charged on an annual basis is 8%, and the Town currently charges that, but we have the option to lower that. So what we're proposing is reducing that from 8% to 4%. This is really an equity thing. Those who are eligible deferrals have some type of significant financial hardship in age or medical criteria in order to be eligible for a deferral. So, their financial condition is in a rather poor state, and the lower the interest that we're charging, the less equity that we're eating into their and their family's asset. So- So, we will recover a hundred percent of those taxes and any interest that's earned during the closing of the property, once it's eventually sold in the future. So, we think this is a, you know, an equity matter for consideration by town meeting, and this would apply to all properties effective July one, twenty twenty-three. There's currently one property that has a tax deferral. There's, it's really inconsequential financial change that we're making through this warrant article. It benefits the taxpayer more than harms the town by, you know, several orders of magnitude.
Sorry, may I just ask, Kevin, you said it was retroactive to seven-one of the share?
So, it, yes, this current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
So, Article Six is a Community Preservation Act-funded, or article that's proposing the use of Community Preservation Act dollars to acquire and restore the town's third motorized fire apparatus, which is a nineteen twenty-six American La France fire engine. This piece of fire apparatus was in service for the town from nineteen twenty-six to the mid to late nineteen fifties. It's currently owned by a former Shrewsbury resident in Texas. That individual is willing to donate the equipment back to the town, along with any ancillary parts that he has, and then the town would look to restore this equipment and hopefully in time for the tricentennial celebration in twenty twenty-seven. So, the funding breaks out into two separate categories, roughly ninety-five hundred dollars. It's considered acquisition, but it's actually to transport the vehicle and spare parts in a closed trailer from Texas here to fire headquarters, so that's ninety-five hundred dollars. And then the balance would be used for any costs associated with the restoration of the vehicle. This has been approved as a historic asset of the community by the historic, Historical Commission. It has also been recommended for approval by the Community Preservation Commission on a unanimous vote by both of those respective bodies. I think the largest question is, right now, is would this be enough money to actually do the, the restoration to parade quality? That's been the heart of most conversations from the Finance Committee to the CPC. We won't really know that number until we are able to see the vehicle and do a better assessment. And I think the next approach, once we exhausted the Community Preservation Act funds, would be a fundraising opportunity with the community, once we have it here, to try to garner private donations to do any additional work that we may not be able to cover with this sixty
Mr. Ms. Clark?
You have a question?
May I ask, is it, am I correct that there is a firefighter at fire headquarters that would be doing most of the restoration work?
Right, so Joe Milos, who's the Maintenance and Operations Manager of the Fire Department, would be doing the vast majority of the disassembly and determining what parts need to be remanufactured and, and doing a lot of work. And we also know that there's other groups within the area to do historic fire apparatus restoration who may be able to advise. But yeah, we have that extreme benefit that we're really only seeking funding for parts and not labor because of firefighter Milos's skill, and he has experience in restoring historic vehicles as well, it's, it's a hobby of his, so we, we do get that benefit as well.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you have a question, actually?
Go ahead.
Just for the benefit of those at home, could you clarify the fundraising aspect that you mentioned?
Sure.
You can't, we can't do both CPC funds and fundraising at the same time.
Right. Yeah, the Community Preservation Act does prohibit the town from doing, utilizing private investment and CPA dollars at the same time. So, if, if the town does receive private investments, it would have to exhaust all those and then resume spending CPA. So, our approach on this would be to get the truck in, exhaust the CPA funds, and then as we're nearing the end of the use of those funds, begin to seek private investments. But we can't do both at the same time, so we just don't want to complicate matters. And we're looking to restore the vehicle back to what's known as parade quality, and I'll just use that as a comparison to museum quality. So, parade quality means that we wouldn't be afraid to run it on a rainy day in a parade and take it out in the community and have children climb all over it, and people sit on it and see what it was like to be on a nineteen twenty-six piece of equipment in comparison to museum quality, where you wouldn't want anyone to touch it, it would be behind, you know, the velvet ropes, so to speak. So, we want this to be an asset of the community that people can see, touch, and feel, so that's the direction that we're headed in with it. And it would be stored permanently in a climate-controlled section of Station Two off of Harrington Avenue.
Thank you.
So, through Article Seven, Justin, if you could just move forward one more slide, we're seeking to make changes to the general bylaws associated with Article Fourteen, which is the dog control bylaw. We're looking to change the penalty, increase them to be consistent with the general law, since we're not allowed to have fines lesser than a general laws. So, this means increasing the first offense to violation of the dog control bylaw from twenty-five to fifty, the second from fifty to a hundred. Currently, our bylaws read the third and succeeding offenses being a hundred dollars. It would change to just the third offense being three hundred dollars, and the fourth and succeeding offenses being five hundred dollars. So, again, general laws require us to be, mirror what they say, so this is doing that. The second change is reducing the specificity in accordance, again, with the general laws. As this board knows, the general laws provide that, a term called the hearing authority and doesn't specify within the details of the state laws who that hearing authority has to be, it actually provides a number of options. So, we're looking to modify our general bylaw to be in the same format, identifying a hearing authority, so whenever it's utilized in enforcing or other proceedings under the dog control bylaw that's consistent with the state laws. So, those are two changes to those two sections. And then Article Eight and Nine, I'll speak about collectively. So, we're looking to provide the town clerk with the authority to make non-substantive changes, basically ministerial changes to numbering and numerical references throughout both the general bylaws in Article Eight and the personnel bylaws in Article Nine. We made a similar change a year ago to the zoning bylaws, and we're just looking for that authority. So, if town meeting alters a particular section of the bylaw, and we don't catch each and every number, or if there's an erroneous reference back to a section that was deleted that we didn't pick up on, the town clerk will be able to make that change. It's really for, you know, the clear utilization and implementation of anything that we need to do through the bylaws. Of course, all substantive changes need to occur through town meeting, and we're not looking to change that authority at all. So, that's the nine total articles associated with this special town meeting for October sixteenth, and I'll put an answer any additional questions that the board may have.
All right, any questions? I know we've seen this a few times now, so it's probably pretty, all pretty, pretty good now. All of our questions answered, finance committees had their public hearing, and I know that you recorded something for Shrewsbury Media Connection so that people can watch the explanations again in another format to make sure that they're prepared to consider these at town meeting on Monday evening. So, if there aren't any questions, we can go ahead one by one and make a recommendation on each article. So, we will start with Article One, which is to see if the town will raise the sum of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars from taxation and appropriate the same to various departments specifically, as detailed in that table.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Article Two is to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars from taxation for deposit into the general stabilization account.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Article Three is to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from taxation to fund the costs associated with capital improvement projects for FY twenty-four, as outlined in that chart and described by the manager.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Four is to see if the town will vote to rescind a portion of the authorization to borrow for the new Beal Elementary School located at two fourteen Lake Street that has been completed, as it was necessary to borrow the full authorization or take any other action related thereto.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Five is to see if the town will vote to set a lower interest rate for the tax deferral and recovery agreements as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, clauses eighteen A and forty-one A, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Six is by the Community Preservation Committee, and it is to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of seventy thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Historic Resources Reserve for the acquisition and restoration of the town's third motorized fire apparatus and nineteen twenty-six American La France fire engine to parade quality, with said funds to be under the control of the fire department and with said funds to be expended before June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, unless the CPC by majority vote extends the deadline, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Seven is to see if the town will vote to amend Section Six in Article Fourteen Dog Control Law of the general bylaws, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Eight is to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws, Article Four, Subpart Four-M, Town Clerk, by inserting a new Section Seven therein to read as follows. The town clerk is authorized to assign appropriate numbers to articles, sections, subsections, paragraphs, subparaphrases, and subparts of the general bylaws, where such edits are non-substantive and ministerial in nature, and such revisions are solely for the purpose of ensuring consistent and appropriate sequencing of such text, provided however that the town clerk shall keep a record of all such revisions, including the date and substance of the revisions, or take any other action related thereto.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then finally, Article Nine is to see if the town will vote to amend the personnel bylaw by inserting a new Section Twenty-one therein to read as follows. The town clerk is authorized to assign appropriate numbers to articles, sections, subsections, paragraphs, subparaphrases, and subparts of the personnel bylaw, where such edits are non-substantive and ministerial in nature, and such revisions are solely for the purposes of ensuring consistent and appropriate sequencing of such text, provided however that the town clerk shall keep a record of all such revisions, including the date and substance of the revisions, or take any action in relation thereto.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that takes us to the end of the warrant. Item Nine on the agenda is to review an act on the one-day all-alcohol license application of Rami Chaimun, Saint Mary's, Syriac Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive, for a sweet sixteen party on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, from seven PM to twelve
Motion to approve. Doesn't look like there's any contingencies on this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number ten is to review an act on the revised Select Board email and written communications policy. We worked on this again at our October third, I think it was, workshop, and there is a clean version in the drive for people to review, but I think we're still not quite there yet. So, I would propose that we hold off on this. We're still working to sort of clarify a section around, you know, how board members are going to respond to emails that they receive to them, them and not to the entire select board. This policy is certainly taking some time, but I think it's important that we, you know, get it right, rather than push it through and, and have a policy that doesn't really serve our needs. So, if everyone's okay with that, we'll bring it back another time.
Yes, I, I actually appreciate the extra time. As, as you know, I was unable to attend the workshop due to a family matter, and so I'm, I'm playing catch-up a little bit, so I look forward to discussing it with you in more detail.
Okay, great, thank you. Item number eleven is to review an act on the appointment of one member to the Shrewsbury Media Connection, SMC Board, Board of Directors, for a three-year term to expire on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-six. We have two applications, Mark Azar, thirty Estebrook Road, and Alden F.L. Harris, the second of one sixty-three South Quinsigamond Avenue. Let's take nominations from anyone who wants to make it.
Sorry, I was gonna say, we had two fantastic applicants. One of them, Mr. Alden Harris, has served on the board for the last few years, and so I would like to make a nomination for Mr. Harris.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
I'm the third.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so we will inform Mr. Harris that he has been reappointed, and thanks to both for applying. Item number twelve is to review an act on the appointment of five members to the Scholarship Committee for a three-year term to expire on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and we do have five people who were interested in this role, many whom are returning, so thank you for the work. I know how long it takes to read through the many scholarship applications that are received each year, so it's not an easy task. So, they are Robert D. Holland of twenty-two Orchard Meadow Drive, Lee Diemopoulos of ninety-seven Hill Street for the superintendent's designee position, Caitlin Gentile of nine Saxon Lane, Deborah Delgado of three eighteen Spring Street, and Carissa Ford of fourteen Cias Avenue.
Motion to make these appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, that brings us to correspondence. So, item number, we have more now, hold on a second. Item number thirteen is an email dated September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the Green Communities Grant, and we were awarded a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for that, and I just wanted to take a minute to just review some of the things that are going to be funded through this. EV charging stations, hybrid vehicles, LED lighting, heat pump system, and heater, and building operator certification training in municipal facilities, including vehicle fleet and infrastructure at the Donahue Rowing Center and at the high school. So, there's quite a bit that will get done through this grant money. Item number fourteen is an email dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the one point eight-two billion-dollar tax relief package that was passed, and that was passed at the state level. I'm not gonna find it. So, it's an act to improve the Commonwealth's competitiveness, affordability, and equity. And there's quite a bit in there that I think are of something for everyone. We thank Rep. Kane for sharing that with us. Item number fifteen is an email dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, from Thomas B. Ash, Director of Legislative Affairs for the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, regarding the FY twenty-four Body worn Program awardees. And so, Shrewsbury was a recipient of one of the awards for the Body worn Camera Program. This is a state program that provides funding for municipal law enforcement agencies to establish and implement body worn camera programs, and Shrewsbury's grant award was in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And then finally, item sixteen is an email dated October fifth, twenty twenty-three, from Bob and Sandra Frick, twenty-one Pheasant Hill Drive, regarding the Point at Hills Farm. And the concern there is with the work that's being done on the site, many residents over the years, because the project was approved, I want to say, over six years ago, and then, you know, ownership changed, sold, now it's finally happening, there are some concerns from residents. And so, Win Companies is holding a community listening session Thursday, October nineteenth, at six PM at the Senior Center, and at that time, the construction process- construction process and the timeline will be outlined and discussed, and concerns of residents will also be heard and addressed. So I know that there was a certain area of people that needed to be informed of this meeting, but that town staff and also the developer was okay with sending it out to the entire neighborhood, so being more broad with it, which I think is just really important because it is an impact to the entire neighborhood. So definitely glad to see that that approach was taken, and I hope that many residents take advantage of this opportunity to share their concerns and also just get some accurate information on what they can expect from the project. That's all I have. Is there anything else to come before the board in open session? Now they'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.